Haré Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré 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 Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré 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 Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré 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 Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré 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 Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré 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 Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré haré Om Jnana Timrandasangyananjana Shalakhaaya Chakshurunmletham Yenathasmai Sri Gurave Namaha Hari Krishna, so thank you all for joining in We are on day five of Purushottam Adikamas We are having these sessions so that we can receive the mercy Of Purna Purushottam Bhagavan, Sri, Rada and Krishna Maybe eternally be engaged in their service And because this Purushottam Adikamas is offering us this additional benediction That we can easily obtain love of Godhead Hence we are trying to follow this entire month We will have sessions where we will be reciting specific prayers And that have been recommended to be recited in this month Hari Krishna, so we first start with the chanting of the Hari Krishna Mahavantara Because Harer nama, harer nama, harer nama eva kevalam Kalau naastheva, naastheva, naastheva gatir anyata In this age of Kali, there is no other method or means That is as effective than the chanting of the Hari Krishna Mahavantara To attain our desired destination which is the chanting of the, which is the Krishna Prema And you know chanting Hari Krishna is also the goal and chanting Hari Krishna is also the means So with that consciousness, let us chant with Shri Lopar Okay, my screen is shared here, alright Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hari 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 Rama 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 Haré Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré Haré Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré Hari Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré Namum Vishnu Padh Parham Humse Parayit Raja Kacharay Sholga Shadash Devendre Sabe Charanaravinda Bhaktive Danta Swami Shri Lopad Ki Jay Gangamaya Kejay, Yamnamaya Kejay, Bhakti Devi Kejay, Thurichimharani Kejay, Samayya Bhakti Vande Kejay, Kaligobidhi Devavana Hari Krishna Mahavantara Ki Jay Sri Rada, Krishna Gopinath, Shamakundara, Rada Kunda, Giri Ordon Ki Jay, Madra Dham Ki Jay, Vrindha Vrindham Ki Jay Maya Purna Deep Dham Ki Jay, Purushottam Akshetra Sri Jagannath Puri Dham Ki Jay, Anantapooji Gora Bhakti Vande Ki Jay Samayve Eta Bhakti Vande Ki Jay, All Glories to the Semille Goji Sare Krishna, All Glories to the Semille Goji Sare Krishna All Glories, All Glories, All Glories, Shri Sri Guru and Sri Guru Ranga Shlaupad Ki Jay, Shlaupad Dev Ki Jay, Anantapooji Gora Bhakti Vande Ki Jay Hitai Gora Prima Nande Hari Hari Bol Om Jnana Timrandasangyananjana Shalakhaaya Chakshurunmletham Yenathasmai Sri Gurave Namaha Sri Chaitanya Mano Bishtham Stapi Tom Yenabhu Taleshvayam Rupa Kada Mayam Dada Atispa Padanjitham Vandeham Sri Guru, Sri Uda Pada Kamalam Sri Guru Unvaishnavam Sri Rupam Sagradjatham Sag Naruguna Thanvitam Samstajivam Saadvaitam Savadutam Vajna Saitam Sri Krishna Chaitanya Devam Sri Rada Krishna Padan Sarvanalitam Sri Vishakanvitam Visha Namum Vishnu Padhaya Krishna Prishaya Bhootale Shrimate Bhaktive Danta Swami Nitya Aminne Namaste Sarasvade Devae Gauravani Pracharinne Nirvijeshashunyavadi Paschati Adi Shutharine Namum Mahavatanyaya Krishna Prema Pradayate Krishnaaya Krishna Chaitanya Namne Gaurav Dusheenu Panchadatvadmakam Krishnam Bhaktarupasvarupakam Bhakta Bataram Bhakta Kham Namami Bhakta Shaktikam He Krishna Karan Asindo Dina Banto Jagatpate Gobeesh Gopi Kaakant Sri Rada Kaant Namusare Taptikaanchana Gaurangi Radhe Vrindavaneshwari Dushabhaanu Sudediri Pranamami Haripye Panchakalpatarobias Chakrapasindo Devachka Patitaanam Paavane Bhyo Vaishnave Bhyo Namum Namaha Jai Sri Krishna Chaitanya Prabhu Nityanand Sri Advaita Gadaarar Sri Vasadi Gora Bhaktavinda Hari Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré 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 Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré haré Purave Gauruchandraaya Radhikaya Tharala Yeh Krishnaaya Krishna Bhaktaya Tharbhaktaya Namum Namaha Mookam Karoti Vaachalam Bangum Langayategiri Yatra Prabhatam Hamle Sri Guru Unvina Karinam Paramananda Madhamam Sri Krishna Chaitanya Ishwaram Hari Om Sat Sat Hari Krishna So now we will be going on to our recitation of The fifteenth chapter of Bhagavad Gita and then we will move on to Shrimad Bhagavatam, ten to ten And then we will sing those beautiful songs, Chor Ashtakam and Ugal Ashtakam And then we will read Shri Lopad's book, Perfection of Yoga And then we will end with Hainam Sangit So that's the schedule for the day, so let's quickly jump into our study of Shrimad Bhagavad Gita, chapter number fifteen Entitled, "The Yoga of the Supreme Person" Sri Purushottamat Yoga Om Namoh Bhagavate Vasudevaya Om Namoh Bhagavate Vasudevaya Om Namoh Bhagavate Vasudevaya Sri Bhagavan Vacha Urdhamulam Adahashakam Ashvattam Praho Ravyayam Chandam Seesya Purnanani Astam Vedasaveda Ved Adal Adal Shodhvan Prashnataastasy Shakhha Puna Pravridha Vishaya Pravalah Adashchamulananu Santatani Karma Anubandini Manushyaloke Narupamassehat Toopalavyate Nanthonachadhen Sampratishtha Ashvattam Enamsu Virooda Moolam Asangajastheen Adhradeenachitva Thap Padam Tat Hari Maargitavyam Yasmin Katanan Tantibhu Yaha Tavee Chadhyam Purusham Prapadyaya Thap Pravritap Prasvukapu Hani Nirmanamoha Jita Sangadoshadhyatmanitya Brittaka Mah Vandvairvi Mukta Sukadukkasa Nyairgachandyam Ora Maavyayam Tath Natatbasiyate Suryo Nasashankona Pavak Yadgatva Anivardante Thaddamma Paramamamam Amiivamsho Jivaloke Jiva Bhootaan Sanathanah Manahshustan Indriyam Prakriti Stanicar Shatih Shariram Yadvapnoti Yachapitramatishvara Rithvaitani Samyati Va Yurdantani Vasayat Shrotram Chakshus Padashram Chaurasam Granam Eva Ch Adishthaya Manuschaya Anupasevate Utkramantam Sitam Vapi Bhujanam Vavunanitam Vimudhananupashantih Pashantih Jnana Chakshu Thaha Yatantoh Yoginas Chainam Pashantiyatmanevasthitam Yatantoh Bikrata Atmano Nainam Pashantichita Thaha Yedadittiram Thijajajadva Shethegalam Yachchandraam Seem Chaatnotat Thijio Vittimamakam Dhamavishyaja Bhootani Tharyaniham Ojusa Pushnami Joshadi Sarva Somo Bhoothva Rasatmakah Amvaishwana Ro Bhoothva Pranidham Deham Ashtrath Prana Apana Samayuttaha Pacham Aninnam Chadur Vidham Pacham Yannam Chadur Vidham Sarva Shichaham Hadi Sanne Vishto Mathas Smritil Jnannam Apohanam Ch Vedayishya Sarvaydahameva Vedyo Vedanta Gridvedhavide Bacha Vavumapuru Shavloke Kshara Shakhshara Eva Ch Kshara Sarva Ni Bhootani Putasdo Ksharuchate Utta Mahapuru Shastvanyaha Paramatmeti Udahartha Yo Logatre Va Vishyavivriti Agaya Ishvaraha Yasman Charamati Doham Aksharadapi Juttamah Atosmeeloke Leedee Cha Pratitha Purushottamah Yo Mamevam Samhudo Janati Purushottamam Sa Sarva Vittujati Man Sarva Bhavena Baharaka Iti Guyyatamam Shaastram Idam Uptham Manavayanaka Edak Gudva Puttimansyah Kritakrityas Chah Baharaka Translation, Shri Lopad Ki Jay The Supreme Person of Godhead Lord Sri Krishna says, it is said That there is an imperishable banyan tree that has its root upward and its branches down And whose leaves are the vedic hymns One who knows this tree is an owner of the vedas The branches of this tree extend downward and upward Now reached by the three modes of material nature The twigs are the objects of the senses This tree also has roots going down And these are bound to the fruit of actions of human society The real form of this tree cannot be perceived in this world No one can understand where it ends, where it begins, or where its foundation is But with determination, one must cut down the strongly rooted tree with a weapon of detachment Thereafter, one must seek that place from which having gone But never returns and there surrendered to that supreme personality of Godhead From whom everything began and from everything has extended since time immemorial Those are free from false prestige Nirmanamoha Jita Sangadoshah Those who are free from false prestige illusion and false association Who understand eternal, who are done with the material lust Who are freed from the dualities of happiness and distress And who, undeviled, know how to surrender to the supreme personality of Godhead They attain to that eternal kingdom That supreme abode of mind is not illuminated by the sun or the moon Nor by fire or electricity Those who reach it never return to this material world The living entities in this conditioned world are my eternal fragmentary parts To the conditioned life, they are struggling very hard with the six senses which include the mind The living entity in this material world carries his different conceptions of life From one body to another as the air carries aromas As he takes one kind of body and again quits it to take another The living entity thus taking another gross body obtains a certain type of ear, eye, tongue, nose and sense of touch Which are grouped about the mind He does enjoy as a particular set of sense objects The foolish cannot understand how a living entity can quit its body Or can they understand what sort of body enjoys under the spell of the modes of nature But one whose eyes are trained in knowledge can see all this The endeavoring transcendentalists who are situated in self-realization can see all this clearly But those whose minds are not developed and who are not situated in self-realization Cannot see what is taking place though they may try The splendor of the sun which dissipates in darkness of this whole world comes from me The splendor of the moon and the splendor of fire also come from me I entered into each planet and by my energy they stay in orbit I become the moon and thereby supply the juice of life to all vegetables I am the fire of digestion in the bodies of all living entities And I join with the air of life outgoing and incoming Digest the four kinds of footsteps The four kinds of footsteps are that which are chewed, sucked, licked and swallowed like that So then the famous words, Sarva Shichaham Hadi Sanne Vishto Mathas Smritir Jana Ma Pohanam Ch I am seated in everyone's heart From me comes remembrance, knowledge and forgetfulness By all the vedas, I am to be known Indeed, I am the compiler of Vedanta and I am the owner of the vedas There are two classes of beings, the fallible and the infallible In the material world, every living entity is fallible And in the spiritual world, every living entity is called infallible, akshara and akshara Besides these two, there is a greater living personality, the supreme soul The imperishable lord himself who has entered the three worlds and is maintaining them Because I am transcendental, beyond both the fallible and the infallible And because I am the greatest, I am celebrated both in the world and in the vedas as that supreme person Whoever knows me as the supreme personality of Godhead without doubting is an owner of everything He therefore engages himself in full devotional service to me, oh Sanabharata This is the most confidential part of the vedic scriptures, oh sinless one Arjuna And it is disclosed now by me Whoever understands this will become wise and his endeavors will know perfection Grantra Shrimad Bhagavat Gita Ki Jay Jagat Guru Shri Lopad Ki Jay So now we move on to Shrimad Bhagavatam, cantor ten, chapter fourteen, Brahma's Prayers, Lord Sri Krishna Om Namoh Bhagavate Vasudevaya Om Namoh Bhagavate Vasudevaya Om Namoh Bhagavate Vasudevaya Narayanam Namaskrityam Naranchayivana Rotthamam Devin Sarasvatim Vyasam Tato Jayam Udhireyet Nashtra Praeshu Madreshu Nittim Bhagavate Sevaya Bhagavatiyottam Ashloki Bhakti Irva Vati Nishthake Krishnaaya Vasudevaya Devaki Nandanayacha Nanda Gopukumaraya Govindaya Namum Namaha Namoh Pankajana Bhaya Namoh Pankajamali Ne Namoh Pankajanitraaya Namaste Pankajangre Pahe Pahe Mahayogin Devadeva Jukatpate Naanyam Dva Agapayampashay Yatra Mrityu Pharasparam Hari Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré 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 Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré haré Hari Krishna So first, before we start reciting the verses of this chapter Let's quickly see what is the summary of the prayer that Brahma offers to Lord Sri Krishna So this is entitled, "Brahma's Prayers, Lord Krishna" This chapter describes the prayers Brahma offered to Lord Sri Krishna Who is also known as Nanda Nandana, why? Because he is the son of Nanda Maharaj For his satisfaction, Brahma first praised the purity of the Lord's transcendental lips And then declared that his original identity of sweetness is even more difficult to comprehend than his opulence, right? Because sweetness, we are going to go much later in the tenth canto From the canto one to canto nine of Shrimad Bhagavatam You are only understanding the greatness of the supreme personality of Godhead Only by the devotional process of hearing and chanting transcendental sounds received from vedic authorities Can one realize the personality of Godhead It is fruitless to try to realize God through processes outside the scope of vedic authority So what is the process to understand the supreme lord? Shravana Kirtana Smarna Vandana Padasevana Pujaana Sakijana Atmanivedana Shravana Kirtana Smarna Vandana Padasevana Dasyarim Pujaana Sakijana Atmanivedana Govinda Dasabhila Shari Bajahu Re Manasrinanda Nandan Abhayacharanara Vindari Right? So devotional process, it starts with Shravana Kirtana Then it comes to Smarana, remembrance Shravana Kirtana Smarna Vandana, then worshiping the lord With wonderful prayers like that Shravana Kirtana Smarna Vandana Padasevana Offering flowers to the lotus root of the lord, worshiping lotus root of the lord Dasya in the mood of the servant Pujaana, doing puja for the lord That we do Mangala Arati, right? We offer four, two, three, seven, like that, we offer gi lamp, we offer flowers, we offer chamara We offer vyajana like that worship of the lord Pujaana Sakijana Atmanivedana, those are very, very high stages Where one realizes that, you know, one is a friend of the lord And in this way, they are all ragatmika bhaktas Who surrendered their life to the supreme personality of Godhead And finally it is, "Atmanivedana", that means I surrender, I am yours Krishna You are mine, I am yours, like that it goes Okay, it is fruitless to try to realize God through processes outside this scope of vedic authority, right? You always follow guru, shastra and sadhu As we practice our reviving, for the purpose of reviving our consciousness Our lost love with Lord Sri Krishna In order to re-awaken our lost love for Krishna We have to follow as per the scriptures what is given In the scriptures it is said, "Harer nama, harer nama eva kevalam" In Kali yoga, there is no other way other than the chanting of, "Hare Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré" "Hare Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré haré" The mystery of the personality of Godhead, who is the reservoir of unlimited spiritual qualities, is inconceivable, right? Ayashwariya Samagrisya Neeriyasya Yashashriyaha Jana Vairagya Yascheva Sanambhagaitingana The lord is supremely knowledgeable, the lord is supremely wealthy The lord is supremely famous, the lord is supremely beautiful The lord is supremely renouncing everything, right? He became the charioteer for Arjuna He renounced everything, being the king, being the supreme lord, nothing Right? He became the servant, menial servant of a charioteer, he took for the pleasure of his devotee, right? So wealth, strength, knowledge, fame, renunciation and beauty All of these six opulence, Krishna possesses in full, right? So he is a reservoir of unlimited spiritual qualities It is even more difficult to understand the impersonal supreme Thus, only by the mercy of lord can one understand his glories Finally realizing this, Brahma repeatedly condemned his own actions And recognized that Lord Sri Krishna, the ultimate shelter of the universe Is Brahma's own father, the original Narayana In this way, Brahma begged for the lord's forgiveness, right? This is after the Brahman, we will discuss in detail, right? Brahma was put into illusion and Brahma is understanding now that Whom I thought was an ordinary boy is now the supreme personality of Godhead And he offers his four heads by surrendering to the lotus root of Lord Sri Krishna Four mukuts at the lotus root of Lord Sri Krishna, like that, he is begging for forgiveness of the lord Brahma then glorified the inconceivable opulence of the personality of Godhead And described the ways in which Brahma and Shiva differ from lord Vishnu, the reason for the supreme lord's appearance In various species of demi-gods, animals and so on Eternal nature of the pastimes, the personality of Godhead, the temporality of the material world Very beautiful, inconceivable opulence, right? We don't understand, that is because Krishna tells in Bhagavad Gita, tenth chapter, right? Mama Tejo, Amso Shambava, right? Or whatever you find very beautiful in this world To understand that, it is but a spark of my splendor Now here, our Brahmaji, who is our param guru, in our Brahma Madhava Godeva Vashnava Parampara He is glorifying the supreme personality of Godhead with the choicest of prayers By knowing the supreme personality in truth, the individual spirit soul can achieve liberation from bondage In actuality however, both liberation and bondage are unreal But it is only from the living entity's conditioned outlook that is bondage and liberation are produced Thinking the personal form of Lord Sri Krishna illusory Fool, to reject his lotus root, and look elsewhere to find the supreme self Bonam Jirunamante Jyana Manam Prapakate Vasudevasarvamitisa Mahatmasudurlabaha Very, very rare to find a person except that Krishna is the supreme personality of Godhead Other way, there is lot of fight, whether it is Krishna or, you know, there is one Tamil movie which came Kalvyasalvamah Vidamah, like that something Whether it is Saraswati Devi or Lakshmi Devi or whether it is Durga Devi, who is supreme, like that And then whether it is, you know, Lord Shiva or Lord Brahma or Lord Vishnu Very nearly, in South India especially, it happens, all these debates and discussions, right? Very clearly, right? Ishvara, Paramakrishna, Sachidhanan Devi, Grah Radhiraadhir Gohindha, Sarvakaranakaranam, Brahma Samita, first verse And then in Bhagavatam Ek Atecham Shakala Kumsakrishnastu Bhagavan Swayam Right? So many scriptures, from the scriptures we need to understand, who is the avatari? Who is the avatari avatars, right? And then Krishna expands as a good avatars, right? To take care of the three modes of material nature He expands himself as Shiva, Brahma and Vishnu And to take care of the material modes of nature, tamasek, rajasic, kants, apy, like that, right? But the futility of their search is the obvious proof of their foolishness There is simply no way to understand the truth of the personality of Godhead without his mercy And how do you attract lord's mercy? By engaging in devotional service Having a satisfactory conclusion, Lord Brahma analyzed the great good forms of the residence of Raja And then personally pray to be born there, even as a blade of grass or a bush or a creeper This is Brahma's prayer Indeed, the homes of the residence of Rindavan are not presents of material existence But rather, boards indeed with the jyani and yogis Now we want to study, we will sing this song, "Varje Prasidam Navani Kachoram" Where Bilva Mangataaku is going to tell "Oh Krishna, I want to impress you in the kara kraha" Ah, the dark, unpleasant cell of my heart, like that But here, Brahmaji is specifically saying that Rajadharm is not a, is not this kind of a prison house It is rather a place that is envied even by the jyani's and the yogis On the other hand, any home without a connection to Lord Krishna Is in fact a prison cell of material existence Finally Brahma offered his whole self with the lotus root of the supreme lord and praised him again and praised him again and again, circumambulated him and took his leave. Lord Krishna then gathered the animals Brahma stole and led them to the place on the Amunas bank where the coward boys had been taking lunch. The same friends had been present there before we are sitting here now. By the power of Krishna's illusion energy, they had forgotten everything. And they are telling Krishna, it's almost a year, but then they are telling Krishna, Krishna you returned so quickly, very good. Now we couldn't even take a morsel of food without you, that is the love of the gopis and the gopas for Lord Sri Krishna. They cannot tolerate the separation from Lord Krishna even for a minute and they cannot go ahead with their life without Krishna, like that. Laughing at the words of the coward boys, right? Krishna is thinking, one year have passed and these boys are talking like this, so Krishna is laughing. Lord Krishna began taking his meal in their company. While eating Krishna pointed out to his young friends, this is kind of the skin of the python. The boys thought, Oh Krishna has now killed this terrible snake. Indeed, later they related to the residents of Brindavan, the incident of Krishna's killing the agar demon. In this way, the coward boys described pastimes that Lord Krishna had performed in his balya age, between ages one and five, even though his age was currently pauganda, that means between six and ten, like that. Shri Goswami concludes this chapter by explaining, oh the gopis loved Lord Sri Krishna even more than they loved your own sons, especially during this one-year period when Krishna had actually expanded as the young coward boys as well as the calves whom Brahma had kept in the cave. There was a replica of all of them because Krishna had expanded himself into every single gopa, every single calf. And in this way, this pastime happened and all the gopis loved their, allowed their children much more than normal, why? Because Krishna himself has expanded, right? It is not that they are all living entities, Krishna himself personally expanded as the coward boys and as the calves. So in this way, the cows were feeling more affection towards their calves and you know the elderly gopas and the gopis, they felt more affection towards their young children, where the coward boys, like that. So Granthraj Shrimad Bhagavatam Ki Jaye. Now let's move on to the recitation of the beautiful verses, the prayer verses by our Brahmaji. Okay, yeah, yeah. Okay, so let's go on to the prayer verses. Yeah, okay. Om Namah Bhagavate Vasudevaya, Om Namah Bhagavate Vasudevaya, Om Namah Bhagavate Vasudevaya. 10.14.1, Sri Brahmo Vaacha, this chapter is entitled Brahmas Prayers to Lord Sri Krishna. Sri Brahmo Vaacha, Novi Depravapusheta Darambaraya Gunjavatamsavari Kichanasallukhaya Manneeshra Jekavale Vitravishana Venu Lakshmaashriyemruthupadikshubhangajaya Asyapi Devapushomat Anogrhasya Svecha Mayasyanutubhumi Asyakopi Neeshemahitvasitum Manasantareena Sakshata Vaidhaki Mutaakshikaanubhute Jyani Priyasam Mudapashyamantaeva Jeevan Tisanmukritam Dhiyavartam Stani Sitashrutikatam Tanuvan Manubhir Yeh Priyasool Jita Jito Vyasyta Isrilokyaam Shreha Shritimbaktimudasya Devibho Krishna Diye Kevalabho Dalaptaye Teesha Masauklayshala Eba Shishyate Naanyadhyathastooladushavagati Nam Urehabhuman Mahavopiyoginas Vadatpideha Nijukamalabdaya Vibuddhyavaktivakethopanithaya Pravehdirendju Chutategatim Param Tatha Pigu Manmihma Gunasyate Vibodumadhatyamalanta Atmanidhi Avikriyachvanubhadarupado Hinanyabodhyatmakayana Chanyatah Gunatmanasthe Pigunanvimaatum Hitavatirnas Tikhshresya Kalleenayairgavimidasukalpae Dhuvaamshavake Nikaduvaasha Tatte Nukam Paansusamikshamadu Gunjanayevatmakritam Vipakam Hridvagapurbir Vilatranamasthe Jeevita Yomukthi Adesadayavag Asheshamena Aryamantataadge Paratmanidvayam Maayamayne Mayaamvitatyechitum Atma Veybhavam Yeham Kiyanaicham Ivarchiragnao Atahakshamachvaachutameerechobo Yejaanatastvadpratagishamani Nah Ajavalepanthamundchakshusha Eesho Kampyomayinathavani Te Waam Tamomahdaham Charahdiwargho Samveechitandagatas Vitashthikayah Vedrikvidavigani Thandaparannucharya Vataadvarome Vivasya Chademe Hidvam UdshepanamGanbagatasyapadayo Kimkalpatemaatudokshajagashay Kimmastinastinaypadeshabushitam Tavastikukshikiyadapyanantaha Jagatrayananto Dadi Samblobhote Narayanasyo Naavinalaad Vinirgatojasvritikvanam Vaimrushaa Kimpri Shvaratvannakneerkatosme Narayanasvam Nahitsarvadehinam Atmasyadiksha Kilalokasakshi Narayanoongam Narabujalayana Tachapi Satyam Tavayvamaya Tachayjarstam Tavasadjagatabho Kimmene Dristumbhavamsatayva Kimmavasru Dristumbhrivavedadayva Kimmnosapaddibapunardyalashim Atreva Mayaagamanavatare Hisyabrupanushasrihusutasya Kritsnasyachantar Jagarejaninyam Ayatmeva Pakthi Krithamte Hisyakshapidam Sarvam Satmam Bhatiyathata Tatvayapihatat Sarvam Kimmidam Mayavina Adyivatvadradese Kimmamadema Ayatma Darshitam Ekoh Si Pratamam Tadobrachasurigpat Sasaamstha Apib Taavantoshichadurgujasatagilehi Saakammayopasita Astavantevajagantiabhutamitam Brahmaadvayam Shishyadeh Ajanaamtvatpatavimanatmane Atma Atmanavasi Tatyamayaam Shristaivaham Jagato Vidana Ivatvamishon Ivatranetrah Surishrishaavi Shattatayvanrashavi Thiriyakshuyadav Pitejanasya Janmasatam Durmadanegrahaya Prabhovidatah Anuprahayaja Voveti Bhuman Bhagaman Paratman Paratman Yogeshvarothedhastrilokyaan Vavakatam Vakati Vakadeti Vistariyantiris Yoganayaam Tasmaadham Jaganashisham Asatsvarupam Svapnabamas Trisanam Dukkadukham Dvayevanittysukabodatanavanante Mayaatudhyadavyak Saktivava Bhati Ekastvam Atmapurushapurana Satyasvayam Jyotyaranantaadhyah Nityoksharojasrasukoniranjana Hurnadvayomukto Vadi Tomratah Evamvitam Tvaamsakalatmanamapi Swatmanam Atma Atmayavichakshade Gurvarkalabdopanishatschuchusha Edetaran Devabhavana Bhavandratah Mudim Atmanam Evatpadyavijanakam Denevajatam Nikilam Prapanchitam Jyani Nabhuyopijadatpranayadere Dvam Ahervoga Bhavavayatah Ajyana Samyavabandamukshavodhognaminanyavasthaknyavavat Ajashrachityaatmanikevale Parevijarayamani Tharnaviavahani Vatatmanam Paramvata Paramatmanam Eevichat Atmabunarbhairmritya Ahogjyajanataadhyatah Antarvavenantavantam Eva Hidat Tijantoh Yantisantaha Asantamapiyanti Ahimantareena Santamgunamtam Kimmuyuentisantaha Atapitadeva Panamujadvaya Saghale Shanugitaevah Janaatitattvambalavan Mahinno Nachanyekoh Vichiram Vichinvan Tadas tumena Tasa Bhuri Vagobavetrayamanyatradu Vatirascham Enaham Ekoh Vipavachanana Bhutva Nishiveta Vada Pallavam Ahoti Danyavrajgore Manya Sanyamritam Vida Devatemudha Kyasam Vibhobachataratvajatmana Yatritpete Dhyapinachalam Adapvaraha Ahobagam Ahobagam Nandagopavrajokasham Yanmitram Brahma Anandam Purnum Brahma Sanathanam Esanthu Bhagymahima Achuta Tavastam Ekadshevihvayam Bhuri Vaga Edet Dhrishika Cheshikayrasakritvibhaava Sharvadayongri Udaja Madhvanam Vritasavamte Tad Bhuri Bhagyam Nyajanma Kimmappyetavyam Yadgokulipikatamangira Jobi Shekam Yajeevita Tunnikilambhavamal Kunda Swadyap Yatpadaraja Sudhimrityam Eevah Esangbo Shrivashina Mudapavan Kimdevarate Tinash Cheto Vishvafalatphalam Dhalaparam Putrapen Yadib Sadveshadiva Putanapisapula Vameva Devapita Yaddhamartasuritpriyatmatanaya Pranashaya Swatkrithi Tavadragadaya Stina Stavatkaragrhamgrham Tavanmuungrinigado YavatKrishnanadhejanah Prapanchamheetnis Prapanchopi Vidambhayasidhubutale Prapanjanataananda Sandohambrigitum Prabho Jananteva Janantu Kembahukyaanam Eevah Anasova Buzova Chubhibhavam Tavabochara Anujani Himam Krishna Sarvam Tumbeechisarvadritam Tameeva Jagatam Naato Jagatetat Varpitam Sri Krishna Vishni Kolapushkarajosarain Shmanirajradhiji Pushtadivriti Karin Uddarma Sharvarharakshidi Rakshasa Drogakalpamarkam Arvhan Bhagavan Namaste Sri Shugavacha Iti Agushchu Yabhumahnam Sri Parikramnyapadayo Natva Vistam Jagadath Swadham Pratipadyada Tadonukyapya Bhagavan Swabuham Pragavastitam Vatsaan Purilam Aninde Yatapurvasakam Sukham Ekasminnapiyatiyadde Pragnesham Chantaratmanah Krishna Maya Hadaragan Shanaramne Nirereerbaka Kimkimna Vismarantih Maya Mohita Cetusha Yanmohitam Jagadsharm Abhikrishnam Vismritha Atmakham Uchushya Suragakrishnam Swagatam Teteeram Hasaa Naykopyabojikavala Ehitasaadubujakam Nadohasanrashikeshu Rupyaharthyasaharvahai Darshyam Charma Chagaram Nyavartatavanatrjam Bharha Prashunavanadatu Chitritangava Proodama Venudalashnagavodshavady Vatsaan Dranan Anuga Gita Pavitra Kirti Bopitribut Savadrishi Pravivishagushtham Adyane Namahavyalo Yashodhanantashunna Atovitavayam Chashma Tidibala Prerjagoh Sri Rajavacha Brahmanparodave Krishna Yanpreemakatamvavet Yo Bhuta Purvas Tokeshu Soodhaveshavi Tatyam Sri Shugavacha Sarveshamapibhutana Drpasvatnava Pallavah Itare Patvittadhyastat Pallavata Yayevahih Tad Rajendra Yadasne Svasvakatmani Dehinam Natahama Matalam Viputritvittagrahadi Shoh Dehatmavati Nam Bhumsha Abhirajanya Satthamayata Dehaknetamastha Nahe Anukyachatam Deho Pimamata Bhacchet Sadhyasounatmanatpriya Yajeevita Pidheshmin Jeevita Shabhalayashi Tasma Priyatam Harsvatma Sarveshamapidehinam Tadartham Evasakalam Jagadhitacharacharam Krishnamyenam Ave Hiktvam Atmanam Agilatmanam Jagadhitayasuryattra Deevabhatimaya Astutojanaam Adra Krishnam Stashnucharishnuchar Bhagavadrupam Akhilam Naanyadvastihatinchana Sarveshamapivasthunam Habartobhathistita Tasyapi Bhagavan Krishna Kimatadvasturupyatah Samashitayae Padapallavaplavam Atpadam Kunnayshomurare Bhavam Budhirvatsa Padamparam Padampadampadam Yatmadam Natesham Etat Desarvam Akyaatam Yatristoham Ehatvaya Tad Kavmare Harekritham Paugande Parikirtitam Etat Surbhischaritam Murare Agardharamchat Palajemanamcha Diptitarathrupam Ajorpa Vistvam Shrinvan Dranan Eetinaro Kilarthaan Evam Bihare Kavmarei Kavaram Jathurvaje Neela Naisidu Bandair Markatol Plana Dhirhi Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna. Granthraj Shrimad Bhagavatam Ki Jaye. Jagat Guru Srila Prabhupada Ki Jaye. Shri Gurudev Ki Jaye. Intai Gora Prema Anande Hari Hari Bor. Hare Krishna. So now we will sing this beautiful song, which is Yugal Ashtrakam by Shri Goswami. Which is, starts with Krishna Prema Mahi Rada, Rada Prema Mahio Haji. Krishna Prema Mahi Rada, Rada Prema Mahio Haji. Divane Nidhanen Nityam Rada Krishna Gatiima Krishna Syadhravinam Rada, Rada Yaadhravinan Hari Divane Nidhanen Nityam Rada Krishna Gatiima Krishna Paanamahi Rada, Rada Paanamayo Hari Divane Nidhanen Nityam Rada Krishna Gatiima Krishna Drava Mayi Rada, Rada Drava Mayo Hari Divane Nidhanen Nityam Rada Krishna Gatiima Krishna Dehitita Raha, Rada Dehitito Hari Divane Nidhanen Nityam Rada Krishna Gatiima Krishna Chittastithara Rada Chittastito Hari Divane Rada Nidhanen Nityam Rada Krishna Gatiima Neelambar Darara Rada, Deetambar Daro Hari Divane Nidhanen Nityam Rada Krishna Gatiima Vrindavanishvari Rada, Krishna Vrindavanishvara Divane Nidhanen Nityam Rada Krishna Gatiima Rada is made of pure love for Krishna and Krishna is made of pure love for Rada. Life's greatest wealth is Rada and Krishna, my eternal shelter. Rada is the treasure of Krishna and Krishna is the treasure of Rada. Life's greatest wealth is Rada and Krishna, my eternal shelter. Rada pervades life force of Krishna and Krishna pervades life force of Rada. Life's greatest wealth is Rada and Krishna, my eternal shelter. Rada is totally melted with Krishna and Krishna is totally melted with Rada. Life's greatest wealth is Rada and Krishna, my eternal shelter. Rada is situated in the body of Krishna and Krishna is situated in the body of Rada. Life's greatest wealth is Rada and Krishna, my eternal shelter. Rada is fixed in the heart of Krishna and Krishna is fixed in the heart of Rada. Life's greatest wealth is Rada and Krishna, my eternal shelter. Rada wears cloth of blue color and Hari wears, Krishna wears cloth of yellow color. Life's greatest wealth is Shishi Rada and Krishna, my eternal shelter. Rada is the mistress of Brindavan and Krishna is the master of Brindavan. Life's greatest wealth is Rada and Krishna, my eternal shelter. Krishna Prema Mahi Rada, Rada Prema Mahio Hari Jeevanen Nidhanen Nityam Rada Krishna Mati Rada Krishna Gatiima Let Shishi Rada and Krishna, eternally my shelter. Mati Rama means we let, let me always remember Rada and Krishna. All right. Shorashtrakam, Varje Prasidham Navaneetachoram. Our little butter thief, Lord Krishna is very famous. Even when he performs those activities which are, which will cause ill fame to those who might do it, such things also when the supreme lord does it, then it brings him all the more glory. Varje Prasidham Navaneetachoram Kupangananamcha Dukpulachoram Chauragragnyam Purusham Namam Iradikhaya Hidayasachoram Namodha Shamala Kanti Choram Padashritanamcha Namastachoram Chauragragnyam Purusham Namami Atinchani Krityapadashritamya Kenapyaho Beeshana Chauraitre Dristashudhovana Maya दृष्टश्रु दोवान मयासौल दृष्टश्रु दोवान जगत्रयेपि यदिया नामापि हरत्यशेषम् कीर्तसारन्ना पीपा प्रोराष्ट आश्चर्य रूपो ननु चौराइत्रे दृष्टश्रु दोवान मयाकथापि दनम् च मनम् च दतिद्रियानि प्राणम् शर्वित्वम् सर्वम् पलायसे कूत्र द्रदोद चौरात्वम् बक्तीताम् नाति मयानिरूड़ा चिन्नची गोरम्यम् पाशबंधम् विन्नची दिमंबव भाषबंधम् चिन्नची सर्वस्त समस्त बंधम् नईवात्मनो भक्ततम् तु बंधम् मनमानसे तामसरा शिवोरे काराधु हे दुखामाये निवर्ण लाभस्व हे चौर हरे चिरा स्वच्छव्य दोषोति तमीर वधंडम् काराधु हे वस सदा हृदय मधी मद्भक्ति पाशद्रण बंधन निष्चलसन् क्वाम कृष्ण हे प्रलय कोटि शतंतरेपि सर्वस्य चौर हृदयान नहिमो चयामि आई ऑफ़ माय रिस्पेक्टफुल बेस ऑन्स तू डेट फॉरमोस्ट ऑफ़ टीफ़ वोस फेमस इन रजा आईस डी बटर टीफ़ एंड ही वो स्टील्स डी गोपीस क्लॉथ एंड हू फॉर दोस व्ही टेक शेल्टर ऑफ़ हिम स्टील्स डी सिन्स विच अक्रूड ओवर मेनी लाइफटाइम्स आई ऑफ़ माय रिस्पेक्टफुल बेस ऑन्स तू डी फॉरमोस्ट ऑफ़ टीफ़ वो स्टील्स शिमदीर आदिका स्हार्ट वो स्टील्स डी लादार क्लॉथ ऑफ़ डी फ्रेश रेन क्लाउड वो स्टील्स ऑल डी सिन्स एंड सफरिंग्स ऑफ़ दोस वो टेक शेल्टर ऑफ़ इस लॉटर स्किल ही टर्न्स डी सर्नर्ड डेवोटीज इन डी पॉपर्स एंड वांडरिंग होमलेस बेगर्स अलास सच अन फेयरसम टीफ़ इस नेवर बीन सीन ओवर हर्ड ऑफ़ इन ऑल डी थ्री वर्ल्ड्स मी आर अटरेंज ऑफ़ इस नेम पर जस वन ऑफ़ डी माउंटन ऑफ़ सिन्स सच अन अस्टॉनिशिंगली वंडर टीफ़ वंडरफुल टीफ़ आई नेवर सीन ओवर हर्ड ऑफ़ एनीवे ओ टीफ़ हाविंग स्टोन एंड माय वेल्थ माय ओनर माय सेंसेस माय लाइफ एंड माय एवरीथिंग वेयर कैन यू रन तू आई हैव कॉट यू विथ डी रोप ऑफ़ माय डेवोशन यू कट डी टेरेबल नोज़ ऑफ़ यमराज यू सीडीए डी ड्रेडफुल नोज़ ऑफ़ मेटेरियल एक्जिस्टेंस यू श्लाश एवरीवन स्मेटेरियल बॉन्डेज बट यू आर अनेबल तू कट डी नॉट फासन्ड वायर ओन लविंग डेवोटीज ओ स्टीलर ऑफ़ माय एवरीथिंग ओ टीफ़ टुडे आई हैव इंप्रेजेंड यू इन डी मिसरेबल प्रिजन हाउस ऑफ़ माय हार्ट कार अग्रह विच इस वेरी वेरी फेयरफुल यू डी टेरेबल डार्कनेस ऑफ़ माय गुरुंस एंड डेयर फॉर वेरी लॉन्ग टाइम यू विल रिमेन रिसीविंग अप्रॉपरेट पनिशमेंट फॉर योर क्राइम्स ऑफ़ टीवरी ओ कृष्णा टीफ़ ऑफ़ माय एवरीथिंग डी नोज़ ऑफ़ माय डेवोशन रिमेनिंग फॉरएवर टाइट यू विल कंटिन्यू तू रिसाइड इन डी प्रिजन हाउस ऑफ़ माय हार्ट कॉस आई विल नॉट रिलीज़ यू फॉर मिलियंस ऑफ़ एयोन्स व्हाट इस एयोन्स इस मेंशन हियर एयोन्स मींस मिलियंस ऑफ़ मिलियंस एंड ट्रिलियंस ऑफ़ ईयर्स बियोन डी स्पेस एंड टाइम आई विल नेवर रिलीज़ यू इनफाइनेट आई विल नेवर रिलीज़ यू फ्रॉम माय हार्ट एंड डेयर सो डेट्स डी मूड विल्वमंगल चापो आईस यू वांट तू कैप्चर लॉर्ड श्री कृष्णा एंड इस हार्ट्स कृष्णा स्टील्स दोस हार्ट्स जो आज सॉफ्ट इस बटर डेट्स व्हाट दिस ब्यूटफुल सॉन्ग ऑफ़ नवनीत चौरम् डी बटर टीफ़ डेपिक्स दिस ब्यूटफुल सॉन्ग टेल्स अस अरे सो नाव वी आर गोइंग तू डी एजेंडा ऑफ़ डी मीटिंग टुडे विच इस अलरी फोर अग्लो बट लेट्स लेट्स क्विकली स्टडी आवर प्रोपाद्स बुक डी परफेक्शन ऑफ़ योगा लेट मी शेयर माय स्क्रीन एंड डेवोटीज कैन रेज़ योर हैंड्स एंड वी विल रीड चैप्टर थ्री वी कंटिन्यूइंग विथ चैप्टर थ्री ऑफ़ दिस बुक डी परफेक्शन ऑफ़ योगा सो यस्टरडे वी विल रीड अंटिल हाउ डी वेरियस फॉर्म्स ऑफ़ मेडिटेशन आई डी नॉट प्रॉपर्ली परफॉर्म्ड एंड व्हाट हैवेंस आई डी बिकम्स जीरो देयर इस नो बेनिफिट बिकॉज़ वी डोंट हैव डी राइट अटीट्यूड और वी डोंट हैव डी राइट पोस्टर और वी डोंट हैव डी राइट फैम ऑफ़ माइंड आई डेयर व्हाट अरे अश्तंग योगा दिस योगा डेट योगा डेट वी डू पोस्टर इस नॉट राइट आई डेयर माइंड यस्टरडे वी विल डिस्कसिंग डी पास्टर ऑफ़ रित्रास्वराय ना हाउ बाय डी रॉन्ग चांटिंग ऑफ़ प्रेयर्स सम्बडी वोस तू बी बोन तू किल इंद्रा गोट किल्ड बाय इंद्रा लाइक डेट सो डी मन्ट्रास आर वेरी वेरी डेंजरस आई डी प्रांश इट रॉन्गली इट विल गिव अस डी अपोजिट इफेक्ट होवर डी वन सेफ मन्ट्रा डेट एनीबडी एवरीबडी कैन चांट एंड कैन अटेन अल्टीवेट परफेक्शन इस हरे कृष्ण महामंत्र हरे कृष्ण हरे कृष्ण 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 हरे 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 राम हरे राम 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 हरे हरे सो डेट्स व्हाट प्रोपाद इस मेंशनिंग हियर डी आदर योगी प्रोसेसेस इफ वन डस नॉट कंप्लीट डी प्रोसेस दें दें वन कैन अक्षरी फॉल डाउन बिकॉज़ वन इस नॉट एबल तू प्रैक्टिस सच योगी पोस्टर्स और प्राणयमा एक्चर एवरीथिंग वी कनॉट डू सो परफेक्टली एस्पेशली इन दिस आग तली सो व्हाट इस डी बेस्ट फॉर्म ऑफ़ योगा कृष्ण टेल्स इन भगवत गीता 6.47 योगिनाम् अपिसर्वेशाम् मतकते नंतर आत्मना श्रद्धावान् बजुते योमा समय युक्त तमोहता श्रद्धावान् बजुते योमा डुवान तू रेंडर्स डेवोशनल सर्विस अंतु मी विथ फेथ इस डी ग्रेटेस्ट ऑफ़ डी योगीज सो लाइक डेट अरे सो लेट मी शेयर माय स्क्रीन लेट्स कंटिन्यू रीडिंग ऑलवेज थिंकिंग ऑफ़ कृष्णा डेट इस डी फाइनल रिजल्ट ऑफ़ दिस योगी प्रोसेस नॉट बिकमिंग बिगर दें डी बिगेस्ट स्मॉलर दें डी स्मॉलेस बिकमिंग इनवेस्टेबल विल गेटिंग सम्पाउडर इन आवर हैंड राइट डेट इस नॉट डी प्रोसेस फॉर डेट इस नॉट डी गोल ऑफ़ योगा योगा मींस वी एस्टैब्लिश अवर रिकनेक्ट अवर रिलेशनशिप विथ डी सुप्रीम पर्सनैलिटी ऑफ़ गॉड हेड ओके सो आई कैन सी सर्वगोपेश्ती माता जी साइड ना यस माता जी गो हैड डी योगी ऑब्वियसली फ्रॉम डेट
हरे कृष्ण माता जी दंडव प्रणाम
हरे कृष्ण दंडव प्रणाम
हस तू गो थ्रू अन ग्रेड डील ऑफ़ डिफिकल्टी तू पुरीफाई डी आत्मा माइंड बॉडी एंड सोल बट इस इट इस अन फैक्ट डेट दिस कैन बी डून मोस्ट इफेक्टिवली इन दिस आग सिंपली बाय डी चांटिंग ऑफ़ हरे कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 राम हरे राम 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 हरे हरे व्हाय इस दिस बिकॉज़ डी ट्रांसेंडेंटल साउंड वाइब्रेशन इस नॉट डिफरेंट फ्रॉम कृष्णा व्हेन वी चांट इस नेम विथ डेवोशन दें कृष्णा इस विथ अस एंड व्हेन कृष्णा इस विथ अस दें व्हाट डी पॉसिबिलिटी ऑफ़ रिमेनिंग इंप्योर कॉन्सिक्वेंट्री वन अब्जॉर्ब इन कृष्णा कांचेस्नेस इन चांटिंग डी नेम्स ऑफ़ कृष्णा एंड सर्विंग हिम ऑलवेज रिसीव डी बेनिफिट ऑफ़ डी हाईजेस्ट फॉर्म ऑफ़ योगा डी वांटेड इस डेट ही डसेन हैव तू टेक ऑल डी ट्रैबल ऑफ़ डी मेडिटेशनल प्रोसेस डेट इस डी ब्यूटी ऑफ़ डी कृष्णा कांचेस्नेस
हरे कृष्णा थैंक यू माता जी
हरे कृष्ण माता जी
सो योगिनाम् अपिसर्वेशाम् मतकते नंतर आत्मा डेट्स व्हाट इट इस राइट वो वो गेट्स डी हाईएस्ट बेनिफिट ऑफ़ डी हाईएस्ट फॉर्म ऑफ़ योगा वन वोस ऑलवेज अब्जॉर्ब इन कृष्णा कांचेस्नेस वन वो ऑलवेज चांटिंग डी नेम्स ऑफ़ कृष्णा वन वो ऑलवेज सर्विंग लॉर्ड श्री कृष्णा ओके सिंधु माता जी इन योगा फ्रॉम डेट
हरे कृष्ण माता जी
Hare Krishna Madhaji.
Hare Krishna, yes Madhaji, go ahead.
Pranams. In yoga, it is necessary to control all of the senses. And when all the senses are controlled, the mind must be engaged in thinking of Krishna. One becomes peaceful after thus conquering material life. Jitat manaha prashanthasya paramatma samahithaha. For one who has conquered the mind, the super soul is already reached, for he has attained tranquility. Bhagavad Gita six point seven. This material world has been likened to a great forest fire. As in the forest, fire may automatically take place. So in this material world, although we may try to live peacefully, there is always a great conflagration. It is not possible to live in peace anywhere in the material world. But for one who is transcendentally situated, either by the meditational yoga system or by the empirical philosophical method. Or by bhakti yoga, peace is possible. All forms of yoga are meant for transcendental life. But the method of chanting is especially effective in this age. Kithna may go on for hours and one may not feel tired. But it's difficult to sit in lotus position perfectly still for more than few minutes. Yet regardless of the process, once the fire of material life is extinguished. One does not simply experience what is called impersonal void. Rather, as Krishna tells Arjuna, one enters into the supreme abode.
Hare Krishna, thank you Madhaji. Hare Krishna. So again, Prabhupada is reiterating the same thing. Ah that in this age of Kali, it is not possible to do any other process, like meditation was for Satya Yoga. In the Treta Yoga, it was sacrifices and in the Duapara Yoga, it was deity worship. But we don't have the ingredients to perform yajyas, we don't get proper pure ghee, everything. The aahuti that we have to offer to the yajya, the yajya purusha, all they are not getting. So that is why within the comforts of the home, we simply need to sit down. Ah and then focus on the chanting of the Hare Krishna Mahamantra. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. And then we will get the same result as what was obtained by by those in the Satya Yoga with the meditation process. By the Treta Yoga Vasis, by the performance of yajya, by the Duapara Yoga Vasis, by the performance of deity worship. The same benefit we will get in Kal Yoga simply by the chanting of the. Hare Krishna Mahamantra. Vedi shodhishkam na na kalikalmasanashanam. Naata parathro paya sarvavedeshu drishte. Right? All of the Vedic scriptures are saying that only, there is no other way other than chanting the sixteen words mantra. What is that? Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Yunjannevamsadatmanam yoginaitamanasaha. Shantin nirvana paramam matsamstham adigachati. Yes, Navgishwari Madhaji, go ahead.
Hare Krishna Madhaji, Dandat Pranam.
Hare Krishna.
By meditating in this manner, always controlling the body, mind and activities. The mystic translationalist attends to the kingdom of God through. Uh suggestion of material existence of Bhagavad Gita six point fifteen. Krishna's abode is not a void. It is like an establishment and in an establishment, there is a variety of engagements. The successful yogi actually attends to the kingdom of God. Where there is a spiritual variegatedness, the yoga processes are simply ways to elevate oneself to enter into their abode. Actually, we belong to that abode but being forgetful, we are put in this material world. Just as as a madman becomes crazy and is put into a lunatic asylum. So we uh we losing sight, we losing sight of our spiritual identity. Become crazy and are put into this material world. The material world is a sort of lunatic asylum. And we can easily notice that nothing is done very uh. Very sadly here, our real business is to get uh is to get out in and sorry Madhaji. Get out and enter into the kingdom of God in Bhagavad Gita. Krishna gives um Krishna gives information of this kingdom. And also gives instruction about his position and our position of what he is and what.
We are. All the information necessary is said for it in Bhagavad Gita and a sane man will take advantage of this knowledge. Hmm it's very important, Prabhupada concludes this chapter by saying that every sane person should know where his eternal home is. Otherwise, we are like mental asylum people, right? We are mentally not stable. Because we don't know who we are, we don't know who we really are. So we are simply being transferred to this mental asylum which is this material world. Some of us want to get cured of this disease of material existence and then we want to go back home, back to Godhead. Ah that's how this chapter ends. Okay, I see this Madhaji's hand. Uh Sulochana Hari Priya Madhaji, we can nicely see your garden if you can show us your darshan. It'll be nice. I think Madhaji has joined us for the first time today. Uh Madhaji, would you like to read? Sulochana Hari Priya Madhaji. Hare Krishna.
Krishna, Hare Krishna, Dandat Pranam Madhaji.
Dandat Pranam, you can start chapter four much and if possible, you can give us your darshan also. Yes, Madhaji, go ahead.
Yes. Chapter four, Yoga as Body and Mind Control. Throughout Bhagavad Gita, Krishna was encouraging Arjuna to fight for he was a warrior. And fighting was his duty. Although Krishna delineates the meditational yoga system in the sixth chapter. He does not stress it or encourage Arjuna to pursue it as his path. Krishna admits that the meditational process is very difficult.
Yeah, Shri Bhagawan vacha asamshayam mahabaho. Asamshayam mahabaho mano durnegrhamchalam. Abhyasena tukante ya vairagena chakriyade. So this two-step formula Krishna is giving here, asamshayam, very, very difficult to control the mind, mano durnegrhamchalam, very, very difficult to control the mind. This two-step formula that you can adopt by which you can control your mind. What are those two? Abhyasena vairagena. Abhyasena means by practice, that's what we do every day morning during Brahmanurtha time, we continuously practice to chant Hare Krishna. In this way, we are practicing to remember Krishna. And then what happens? What is the result of that? Vairagena. Then automatically we will get detached to the material objects hmm and we'll get attached to Krishna. The more they are getting attached to Krishna by chanting Hare Krishna Mahamantra, the more we will get detached from the material objects. Bhagavad Gita six point thirty-five, very beautiful. Um, my is Madhaji, go ahead. The blessed Lord said. What happened? Okay, Ramya Madhaji, go ahead.
Hare Krishna Madhaji, Dandat Pranam.
Hare Krishna.
The blessed Lord said, oh mighty armed son of Kunti, it is undoubtedly very difficult to curb the restless mind. But it is possible by constant practice and by detachment. Bhagavad Gita six point three five. Hare Krishna emphasizes practice and renunciation as ways to control the mind. Here, here Krishna emphasizes practice and renunciation as ways to control the mind. But what is that renunciation? Today, it is hardly possible for us to renounce anything. For we are so habituated to such a variety of material sense pleasures. Despite leading a life of uncontrolled sense indulgence, we attend yoga classes and expect to attain success. There are so many rules and regulations involved in the proper execution of yoga. And most of us can hardly give up a simple habit like smoking.
Hare Krishna, thank you Madhaji. So what is the rule of, what is the purpose of all these rules and regulations, right? Smarthaviya satatam vishnur. Ismartaviyona jatuchit sarve vidhi nishere yasur. Ete or eva kinkara, all the rules and regulations that we follow. A B C D, no meat eating, no gambling, no intoxication, no illicit sex, everything. The purpose of that is to always remember Krishna, never forget Krishna. Otherwise, all these yogic postures are only some gymnastics and aerobics exercise for the body. They are not going to benefit the soul like that. Okay, we'll end with Sudha Madhaji, go ahead Madhaji. Okay, Madhaji, I believe connection is going offline. Sulochana Madhaji, that's fine. Thank you for reading. Alright, Sudha Madhaji, go ahead. In this discourse.
Hare Krishna Madhaji, Dandat Pranam.
Hare Krishna.
In his discourse on the meditational yoga system. Krishna proclaims that yoga cannot be properly performed by one who eats too much or eats too little. One who starves himself cannot properly perform yoga, nor can the person who eats more than required. The eating process should be moderate, just enough to keep body and soul together. It should be, it should not be for the enjoyment of the tongue. When palatable dishes come before us, we are accustomed to take not just one of the preparations but two, three and four and upwards. Our tongue is never satisfied. But it is not unusual in India to see a yogi take only a small spoonful of rice a day and nothing more. Nor can one execute the meditational yoga system if one sleeps too much or does not sleep sufficiently. Krishna does not say that there is such a thing as dreamless sleep. As soon as we go to sleep, we will have a dream, although we may not remember it. In the Gita, Krishna cautions that one who dreams too much while sleeping cannot properly execute yoga. One should not sleep more than six hours daily. Nor can one infected by insomnia who cannot sleep at night successfully execute yoga for the body must be kept fit. Thus Krishna outlines so many requirements for disciplining the body. All these requirements however can essentially be broken down into four basic rules. No illicit sexual connection, no intoxication, no meat eating and no gambling. These are the four minimum regulations for the execution of any yoga system. And in this age, who can refrain from these activities? We have to test ourselves accordingly to ascertain our success in yoga execution.
Hare Krishna, thank you Madhaji. Wonderful. So we'll end here. So important thing, what I wanted to emphasize here, which is, which is spoken about by Prabhupada here. Ah is no yoga process can be successful until we are regulated in our lifestyle. Right? Yukta ahara, viharasya, yukta cheshtasya karma. Yukta swapnaa bohasya yoohohbahati dukkaha. We have to be regulated in our eating, in our sleeping, in our work, in our recreation. Only when we are regulated, even when six hours of sleep is a must. Sometimes if we're not able to have our six hours of sleep, the morning our chanting will get affected by because we're not able to focus. Ah because the the senses are so tired, right? They're not able to focus, the mind cannot focus. So like that, very important to have our six hours of sleep in the night, continuous six hours. Preferably nine to three, nine P M to three A M, ten eleven twelve, one two three. Or three till three thirty like that. Ah so we should eat properly at regular intervals, sleep properly with proper. With proper consciousness, our sleep also when we go into sleep, we should tell ourselves, yeah, tomorrow morning I'll get up at three thirty. And start with my chanting during Brahmanurtha time, I cleanse myself externally and then I cleanse myself internally by chanting Hare Krishna like that. Today, there was one beautiful message of one Madhaji that was circulated. How this Madhaji had been practicing for close to twenty plus years, twenty-three, twenty-four years. However, she was herself was saying that I was not doing my namajapa very, very with great attention and care. I was involved in preaching, you know, doing lot of services like that. Ah but what is going to really help us at the time of death is how much taste we have attained in chanting the Hare Krishna Mahamantra. She was telling very beautifully how, you know, the mind keeps on thinking of that object in which we have taken shelter of. Madhaji was mentioning, she was continuously thinking of her mother. She knew she had to think of Krishna but she could not. Because at that moment, it is like kapha vata pitta and all are so much, this juggling is happening. You know, we are not in our proper frame of mind. So now when we are in a proper frame of mind, and now we should um we should prepare, right? Abhyasa, Prabhupada is mentioning, you know, this verse also Krishna is mentioning, abhyasa. By continuously practicing to remember Krishna always, that is the only way we'll be able to remember Krishna at the time of death. And how do we remember Krishna? By chanting the Hare Krishna Mahamantra. Right? Apart from our minimum sixteen, seventeen rounds that we do in our Brahmanurtha time. Throughout the day, we should be chanting, our tongue can keep on vibrating Hare Krishna Mahamantra. As we are cooking, as we are folding our clothes, as we are sweeping the house, mopping the house. You know, as we are cooking or as we are cleaning, whatever we may be doing. The the the, you know, the tongue can keep on vibrating, the chanting of the Hare Krishna Mahamantra. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Then all of our services, whatever we do as part of our swadharma also becomes devotional service. Because we are doing it in consciousness of Krishna. Yeah, ma manus marayudhaja, we are fighting the battle with Maya every day. But what is the goal? Our goal is to remember Krishna at the time of death and go back, go back to Godhead. Hmm so you know, so in this way, Madhaji was explaining and Madhaji, you know, she was, she was saying. You know, she could see the Lord, she could see Jagannath and all because she's been serving her deities for the last twenty-three, twenty-four years. She's saying she's got a second chance like Ajamilah. And now she will chant the Hare Krishna Mahamantra with great care and attention, right? All of us have the second chance. Right? We all have gone through eight point four million species, finally we got our human form. All of us have the second chance, simply we can perfect our life by chanting Hare Krishna Mahamantra. Everything else, attending all these sessions, hearing Bhagavad Gita, Bhagavatam, Chaitanya Chari, Kamrit. Reading the small books of Shilpa Prabhupada, why are we doing all of this? We're doing all of this to get taste in chanting Hare Krishna Mahamantra. This is the only process for the age of Kali, right? We have to develop taste in chanting Hare Krishna Mahamantra. Always remembering Krishna, never forgetting Krishna is only possible by chanting Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Kaligabaddita Bhavan Hare Krishna Mahamantra ki jai. Jagatguru Srila Prabhupada ki jai, Shraguru Deva ki jai. Nitai gaura premaanande, Hare Hare bol, Hare Krishna. So let's see who all have stayed with us. We've gone, we've busted, you know, twenty minutes ahead of time. I mean twenty minutes, you know, late. So still we have some devotees with us, thank you. Uh Ramya Madhaji, thank you very much, Sarvagopashni Madhaji, Navgishwari Madhaji. Uh Sindhu Madhaji, Jotsna Vivedi Madhaji, Shoba Madhaji. Nisham Madhaji, Vasanth Machmay Madhaji has joined us after a long time, thank you Madhaji. Nagaveni Madhaji, Anjanam Madhaji, Sudha Madhaji and Moshmi Madhaji, thank you very much for joining in. Panchakalpatro viyas chakrapasindu viyavichapakita nam pavanibyo. Payishnavebyo namo namaha. Anantakoji vishnabridhaki jai Jagatguru Srila Prabhupada ki jai. Srila Guru Deva ki jai Nitai gaura premaanande, Hare Hare bol, Hare Hare bol, Hare Hare bol. Hare Hare, Hare bol, Hare Krishna. So let's do our Hainam Sangkirtan for the prayer of the Lord. Three to five minutes of kirtan and then we'll end our session. From tomorrow, we'll resume back to about twelve thirty P M Indian Standard Time time. And for Mangarathi and for Brahmanurtha chanting, we'll meet at five o'clock as always. Namah oh. Krishna padhaya, Krishna presthaya. Duta le, trima de, bhakti re randra. Vamin pinani ne. Namaste sarvate devi. Gauravani prachari ne. Nirviseshah sunyavadi. Ashchetya dhisadari ne. Jaya Sri Krishna chaitanya. Prabhanitya nanunga. Triyadvaita gadadha shiva sahantauraa bhakta brinda. Jaya Sri Krishna chaitanya. Prabhanitya nanunga. Triyadvaita gadalar shiva sahadi gaurabhakta brinda. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna. Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram. Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna. Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram. Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Jaya Radha, Gopinatha Radha. Gopinatha Radha, Jaya Radha. Giridharani Radha. Giridharani Radha, Jaya Radha. Madhav Radha, Madhav Radha, Jaya Radha. Shama Sundar Radha, Shama Sundar Radha, Jaya Radha. Rasa Bhiaari Radha, Rasa Bhiaari Radhe Radhe, Jaya Radhe. Jaya Radhe, Jaya Radhe. Jaya Sri Radhe, Jaya Guru Parampara. Guru Parampara, Guru Parampara, Jaya Guru Parampara, Jaya. Jaya Prabhu Par, Prabhu Par. Guru Devi, Guru Devi. Pitai gaura hari bol, gaura hari bol, gaura hari bol, gaura hari bol. Iyayam Sangkirtan ki jai, Kaligabaddita Bhavan Hare Krishna Mahamantra ki jai. Jagatguru Srila Prabhupada ki jai, Shraguru Deva ki jai, Nitai gaura premaanande. Hare Hare bol, all glories to Semilli Gaudi, Sare Krishna. All glories to Semilli Gaudi, Sare Krishna, all glories to Semilli Gaudi, Sare Krishna. All glories, all glories, all glories to Shishi Guru and Shri Gaurangah. Shilpa Prabhupada, Shilpa Guru Deva ki jai, Nitai gaura premaanande, Hare Hare bol. Hare Krishna, so thank you all. Generally, we will not have on Sundays but tomorrow we will have because it's the most auspicious Purushotham Adikamas. Right? We don't want to miss even a single day in this month. So tomorrow also we will have, but probably you know if devotees are not able to join, we will. We will skip the the Prabhupada book study that will start on Monday again, resume that. Tomorrow, we will recite all of these wonderful prayers from Shiva Bhagavatam Bhagavad Gita and singing of these wonderful songs. We'll read the translations also of all the songs tomorrow. So thank you very much for joining in. Please join us tomorrow morning for Brahmanurtha chanting and then we'll meet again in the afternoon. Twelve thirty P M Indian Standard Time for our Purushotham Adikamas session. Jagatguru Srila Prabhupada ki jai, Shlaguru Deva ki jai, Anantakoji Gaurabhakta Brindha ki jai. Nitai gaura premaanande, Hare Hare bol. Jai Jai Sri Radhe.